Call to order. We are on to items for review, city manager's report on issues raised at prior council meeting.
So we're going to move the recognition of Tyrone to the next meeting. He could not make it this evening, so we'll move that to the next meeting. And that's all I have.
On to item B, special events applications.
The first application is from Little League Registration. Second is the St. Patrick's Day Parade, the New Jersey Marathon, Restaurant Tour, the New Jersey CASA 5K, Walk MS, Asbury Fresh, the Central Jersey Brain Tumor Walk, Lead Walk, Asbury Park's Got Talent, Jersey Pride, Asbury Park Summer Games, the Shein 5K, Oyster Fest, One More Triathlon, Shoreline Heart Walk, Zombie Walk, Jersey Shore Free to Breathe Walk, Rescue Mission 5K. And the last 21 applications are wedding applications for the 2020 season. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
We are on to item C, items to be presented by Michael Manzella, Director of Transportation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Here tonight to talk about two different topics related to our streets. The first of which is traffic calming on Third and Fourth Avenues. As you are all very aware, speeding has been an issue on these two streets as they are through streets through the city. The city successfully applied for a Safe Routes to School grant in order to provide traffic calming on Third and Fourth Avenues. And we have started that process. We met with the DOT and kicked off that project with a design consultant. So that is in the process, but it's going to take about a year before we see any real construction on that project. So in the interim, in discussing with the council and hearing feedback from residents, we'd like to, on a pilot basis, try some traffic calming.
On what? I'm sorry.
Traffic calming, on a pilot basis. So what I'm proposing is that we install temporary rubberized speed cushions on Third and Fourth Avenues, two locations on each street on either side of the curves, where, you know, people tend to gain speed after the curves on the straightaways. So we're proposing to locate two speed cushion locations about 500 feet from the curve on both sides, east of the curve, west of the curve, on both Third and Fourth Avenues. The cushions will be spaced as such that they will allow emergency vehicles like fire trucks to be able to pass without actually going over the hump. So there should be no impact to emergency response times. There are basically five sections, so there's five pieces of rubberized hump that go across the roadway. But, so, as I said, the fire trucks will be able to clear them, but any typical vehicle wheelbed, it's small enough that they'll have to go over the hump. So what we plan on doing is installing the, you know, we're in the process now of ordering these, installing them in the springtime, as soon as we get them, it's about a four- to six-week lead time. And then measuring speeds before and after to see what kind of impact they have. And that way, we have a set, so when the, you know, the constructed mini roundabouts and other speed feedback devices are installed for the project, we could take them out and use them on other streets that residents are expressing a concern about speeding. With those four locations, we're also doing, obviously, the signage associated with it, basically, speed hump ahead, speed hump here. And we'll measure, we'll measure and see what the impact is, if it makes any measurable difference on speeding at Third and Fourth Avenue. Any questions?
No, this is great.
Let me mention also, in addition to that, we are going to be ordering, on Fourth Avenue, we have deployed stop-for-pedestrian signs at pretty much all the crosswalks, and there's some orange pylons, bollards, at the curve to kind of alert people of the curve. We're going to be ordering that as well and make sure that that's also deployed on Third Avenue. So stop-for-pedestrian signs at crosswalks and the orange bollards on the curve.
Mike, this information that you've given us, would that be put in the paper or the coaster or some of the local places? Because there is a neighbors that's trying to get a committee to
Sure.
talk about the traffic setting, if they hear about this, maybe it'll help.
We can talk internally about doing a release.
Yeah, we can do a press release once we're getting ready to install them.
Right.
And talk about how they're going to work and put something together.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
I was under the impression they had already been ordered to wait till the spring to after winter, doesn't cut it with me. I mean, I don't give a damn. There'll be signs there. If our plow trucks can't realize, pick up your plow for five feet, then we need new plow drivers. To put this off to the spring is just totally unacceptable to me. They should have already been ordered, and the signs and everything else. Again, this is something that came up during the holidays, again, with accidents on the curve and everything, which I think provoked the council to say, hey, we're getting tired of like, and I give you all the credit in the world. We're getting this grant, and it's a great grant, and it will take relief, and that's why this is a pilot program.
Right.
And they're rubber, and they can, in the future, be moved to other streets, be it Grand, be it Monroe or elsewhere, but to keep on putting off Third and Fourth, we're kicking the can down the road. So I'm disappointed they haven't been ordered already. I don't understand why not. No big deal, not the end of the world, but can we order them first thing in the morning and?
We will order them as soon as the 2020 purchases, until, as soon as we can start the 2020 purchases. We still haven't cleared the books for 2019.
We'll get them ordered.
Well, that doesn't explain that to me. I mean, we adopted a temporary budget with money in every item. So I know we have not spent all that temporary money. So again, just like, I'm sorry, Michael, you do a great job and everything, but I mean, when I talked to you and everything, I said, like, you know, the council wants this done as soon as possible. It seems like we're not doing it as soon as possible. We're doing it with some excuse, as soon as we can spend 2020 money. We can spend 2020 money January 1st because we adopted a temporary budget.
We'll get it ordered.
Thank you. And then, the thing that I asked, like, can we, as other towns have done as far as around curves, I know you're looking into it as far as like, what the law says, because what I suggested was like, on Third and Fourth, we do have some dynamic curves. And I see other towns say, curve ahead, speed limit 15. It's another way to slow down the speeding. So between the curves slowing down to 15 and the two speed bumps on each thing, that's three devices to slow down traffic on Third and Fourth.
Yeah, and I'll confirm with the engineer about
Yeah, I know, that's right. Same as like, a lot of people are in a hurry, but don't realize like, you need so many incidents before you can put in four-way stop signs, you need so many incidents before you can even put in full-time speed bumps, everything like that.
Yes.
So, but the quicker we get them up, it's much appreciated.
Great.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Alright, the second item that I was going to present, also in your packet, is Asbury Avenue and the bike lanes there. So specifically, we're talking about the block of Asbury Avenue between Grand Avenue and Heck Street, which is basically adjacent to Library Park. As you all are aware, we, the council adopted an ordinance late last year to extend regulated parking to that block. So in order to do that, we had intended, of course, in striping out the parking spaces to delineate them. But in doing, in thinking about that, we saw that we had an opportunity to start to pilot, again, on a temporary basis, what is in our Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan, which was adopted by the Planning Board this past April. And that is, the plan, the plan for walking and biking in Asbury Park, calls for protected bike lanes on Asbury Avenue. So we saw this as a good opportunity to test it out on one block, since we have to delineate the parking spaces anyway. And what that means basically is, the bike lane is not located between the travel lane and the parked car, and the parking lane, like on most, on typical streets. The bike lane is actually moved behind the parked cars, so next to the curb. So it goes curb, bike lane, parked cars, travel lane. And the idea is, it provides a buffer for the cyclist, and it's a safer facility. It allows more casual cyclists to feel comfortable riding on the street, which is what we want. So we're going to try it on this block when we stripe the street and evaluate it over a certain period of time, probably a year. And then when we look at long-term at plans for repaving Asbury Avenue, you know, particularly for the jurisdiction that we own, the city owns, which is east of Main Street, look at, you know, doing that permanently for that entire stretch. Any questions on that?
I like that. When do we think this is going to happen?
As soon as it's warm enough to stripe again. Because the temperatures have dropped below freezing, you can't really stripe right now. But once the temperatures pick back up and we can get a crew out here, we'll do that.
And you're going to alert people?
Yeah, I plan on, absolutely. Plan on sending letters to the properties on that block, so they can understand the change. I think, you know, residents tend to like it because it gives more of a buffer between moving traffic and the sidewalks, so.
It'll be a bit of a learning curve.
For sure.
But that's why it's called a pilot.
Yeah.
That's right. That's all I had today.
Thank you very much.
We are on to item D, a review of the agenda items for the January 22nd regular meeting.
Okay. We have our minutes to adopt. Consent agenda, we talked about the special events. We're rejecting the bids for traffic striping only because the bids were incomplete. There was some information missing, so we have to go back out for them. We have our bill list, escrow account to be replenished for Sackman. Parking pay stations, this was done, this was a duplicate, so we just have to fix it from our last meeting. The exchange server, this is going to upgrade our email and exchange functionalities. The John Deere Gator and Breathing Air Packs for the Fire Department, that's being purchased out of CDPG money. Our redevelopment council, David Weinstein. T and M is going to be doing our flood, special flood hazard reviews. This is, the next one, 74, is suburban consulting engineers. They're doing some professional services over at Springwood Park, they did not get appointed in January. Same as number 75, it's a professional that we missed last time, as well as McManus Professional Appointment. T and M appointing them as our engineer. We have an appointment to the Business Advisory Committee. And the last resolution is the Affordable Housing Ordinance is that we've been working on, referring them to the Planning Board for their review. And the two ordinances that we're introducing is the conveyance of an easement off of Cookman, and then we had to adjust to salaries, the salary ordinance for two salaries that were over the maximum.
Any questions?
Okay.
I'll just add that on the resolution to refer the Affordable Housing Ordinance to the Planning Board, after the last drafts were finalized, we noticed there was a typo on the first page of a number of the ordinances, and it relates to the date that the Housing Amendment to Bear Share Plan was adopted by the Planning Board. It was actually adopted in February of 2019 rather than November 2019, so Beth McManus is aware of that, and she is sending us a new first page for several of the ordinances, so that when we do send them over to the Planning Board, we'll just attach the new first page that changes the date.
Thank you.
On to item E, matters from the City Council.
Hello. So I have a few things here. On Saturday, January 25th, there's a free community luncheon for anyone who would like to attend at the Senior Center on Springwood Avenue at noon. And I believe there are some flyers on the table that you can take for all who are interested. And Asbury's got pre-K and kindergarten registration that starts at Bradley Elementary and at the Parent Center on February 1st at 10 o'clock, from 10 to 12. And the Asbury Park Public Library is asking folks to join them for their first meeting of the Friends of the Asbury Park Public Library, Saturday, January 25th at noon. Learn how you can volunteer to support your local library through events, activities, and fundraisers. And if anyone needs that flyer, I have it here. That's all I have.
I'm due to the plastic bags van in Asbury Park. The city is asking those individuals who have extra clean reusable bags to donate them to others who may not have. And you can donate to relocations here in the city. City Hall Lobby, the Asbury Park Transportation Center Lobby, and the Asbury Park Senior Center. If you have reusable bags, please donate them, we could use them. And the 2020 census is coming up, and that's going to be very, very important to the city because that determines how many legislatures, legislators we have. It determines what kind of funding we get to the state. It's all based on numbers. So there are two meetings that are coming up. One is going to be a census presentation. This presentation will give you the information and answer frequently asked questions about the census. It will give you what's, when it's going to happen and what's going to happen. And that will take place here in this room on February 12th at 9:00.
February 12th at the council meeting.
At the council meeting.
At the, oh, I'm sorry, at the council meeting. It's going to take place at the council meeting on the 12th of February. There is a second meeting, which is a committee meeting, and those people would like to volunteer to be a member of the committee that is going to be responsible for the 2020 census and Asbury Park are invited to attend that meeting. And that is on February 6th in this room at?
9:30.
9:30 AM. Okay, thank you.
Next.
That's all you, Jesse.
Recently, a lot of people have been calling and asking, is there going to be a fashion show this year? Yes, it is. We're in the process of talking about it and working out the little fine cliques. And as soon as we find out, as soon as we clear this up, I would say, at the end of this week, information will be passed out. This comes Saturday, the 25th, from 10:00 to 11:00. And this has just got me, boo, boo skado, boo skado, okay, I got it right. At 1321 A Ramaral Drive. It's coffee with a council person. This is yours truly, and of course?
Me. And yours truly.
Yours truly, I'm sorry. Alright, thank you, that's it.
I have nothing, thank you.
On to matters from the City Manager.
Nothing tonight.
Matters from the City Attorney. We will take a short recess, and the meeting will begin at 7:00 PM. Meeting call to order. Councilmember Chapman?
Here.
Councilmember Clayton?
Here.
Councilmember Kendall?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn, she's absent. Mayor Moore?
Here.
Will please stand for a moment of reflection, a silent prayer. We will now salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands its name, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 PL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting as per provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Coaster, and the Star Ledger on January 7th, 2020, and posted on the bulletin board the same day. All notices are in file with the city clerk. Do I have a motion to enter into the public participation portion of the meeting?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Please come to the mic, state your name and address for the record, and each speaker will have three minutes.
Ernest McNolly, 400 Deal Lake Drive, 5D, 305 Seventh Avenue, number 25.
Could you speak up, please?
I have two addresses, thank you. Thank you. I just want to start by saying that when I was at St. Stevens with most people here, and the Attorney General was here, we clarified the rankings of municipalities in New Jersey for violence, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I spoke, I asked him directly, I said, is it true that Asbury's the 2nd and Neptune's the 15th, and Long Branch is the 25th of 565? He says, well, not exactly every municipality reports, but most do, and that is your ranking. So I thought to myself, so why do I keep reading in the paper, crime is down in Asbury? Then I realized, statistically, if you move within your ranking, and in the second place, if crime goes down, but you don't move out of your ranking, what difference does it make? So that's the narrative being put out, and how is it propagated? Here's how it's propagated. You have the Asbury Park Press covers Asbury, you have the Sun, you have the Coaster, you have NICSOL, you have AP-TV, and you have the link which is related to the Coaster, and it kind of covers both from Long Branch. Now, what's the narrative? NICSOL doesn't put anything on. Today, there was a, I don't know, somebody busted an ocean for drugs in the car. Boom, it's on NICSOL. All we get from Asbury Park Police NICSOL is, oh, it's going to be fog tomorrow, oh, it's going to be sunny next week. That can't continue. Every single crime that these police stop people for, et cetera, or that happens, has to go on NICSOL. That's why we're on it, that's what all the other municipalities do. Big problem. The other thing is, I don't know, but I seem to notice whenever I come here and speak, I don't care what I say. I never get in the papers. Why? Ms. Papiani or Ms.? Why don't I ever get quoted in the paper? I don't get it. I live here. I pay $5,000 a year in property tax for a not-so-great condo, and I can't even get quoted in the paper when I speak at these meetings? And for everybody out there on AP-TV, you know, really help us. You know, everything's being covered up, and it's not good. It needs, everything needs to be out in the open. 34 seconds, what would I do with that? So those are what I consider the issues. You know, I also do news press work, and none of the papers in town will work with me. I sent them a story about a cop drunk flying through a plate glass window in Asbury at the Severed Wing, right? They won't put it in the paper. Now, the police investigate, they found the Asbury cop, they covered it up, he got a cut, he's bloody, you know, bad police report. How come I can't get in the paper? Oh, no. I can't buy another minute, no? Mayor?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay, and I'm headed to Long Branch, if that's okay?
That's okay.
Okay, thanks.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, City Manager, Assistant City Manager, oh, lawyer. I'm Pam Lamberton, Sunset Avenue. It's been a year since the Dialogue Group put together the proclamation, as we call it. I have brought it back tonight, in case anybody didn't sign it. It's nothing official, it's no ordinance, it's not a resolution. It's just an acknowledgement. If you sign it, you're acknowledging personally that you recognize white privilege exists in this country and exists and has existed at Asbury Park. And you're pledging that you won't be a part of it, and that you will do everything that you're ever empowered with, whatever power you are ever empowered with, you will help to fight it. So the proclamation is there. It's, we're still celebrating Martin Luther King, and next month is Black History Month, so I'll be back with it. But if you haven't signed it, I'd love you to sign it with us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Rita Moreno, 8th Avenue. I've been reviewing all the committees that you have, what is it, 20 now? And the TRC, that's a funny committee. It only has four people. It has the I-Star, it has our engineer, I think he's our engineer, and our planner, and the head of, the chairperson of the Planning Board. Don't you think, it used to be a lot bigger than it is. How come it's so small now? There's no representation, actually, from a taxpayer on there. I think you should look into that, and I think you should add more people to that. I don't know if they have to be Planning Board people or what. You can't have four people, and three of them are stacked against us. And I think that's a very important board. It needs, it needs the right people on there. And the other thing I was reviewing was that other board, the Special Events Board. Do you look at, well, you don't have to answer me. I want to know who looks at all those special events, and then you okay them here. I know Lisha looks at them, but is anybody else looking at them? Because they need to be looked into. Some of the special events that we had last year were not the proper ones for Asbury Park. And I think you should look into some of these committees. Nobody has 20 committees to begin with, I checked around. They're all laughing, they think we have 20 committees here. I mean, like, you guys were elected, you got 286 days before the next election. I think it's 86, might be 85 now. But it's up to you to do the job, not these committees. Because a lot of these people are new in town. They don't know what's going on, they just want to see things done. But sometimes the things that are done, like parking and this and that, aren't the right things. I've been to parking meetings, I've been to quite a few meetings. And I think you should really, I know you're busy, but you have to look at the people you put on these boards. And I'd like to know about the TRC, though, because that's the most important board to me. Oh, by the way, what happened to the Budget Committee? No committee? That's the other thing. And that's it.
So the TRC?
The TRC is something in itself. It's one of the few committees that is made up by a specific ordinance. It says who the members can be and cannot be, or can be. And it's, you're going to have to get it tomorrow from Melody or Donna. I'm winging it off the top of my head. It's the Chairman of the Planning Board, it's an architect, it's somebody from I-Star, and two representatives from the state of New Jersey who never attend. But it's not like the City Manager or his or her designate. It's specific. So we can give you the exact membership tomorrow, call, unless you have it now.
Yeah, we have it now. Actually, Rita, I actually have all the committees, I've had the same questions you have, and I've been looking over them. So the TRC is, there should be, groups of eight people should be on it, so we're a little short. And the way the ordinance reads, it's a council member serving on the planning board, one of which will be a member representing the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, that's probably what the mayor was alluding to. One shall be a member representing the DCA. One shall be a professional planner, a licensed architect, chairman of the planning board, engineer serving the planning board, representative of the developer. So for the most part, the people that are listed all fit into that except for the DEP and the DCA. So we'll look into that to get the board up. So we'll look into that to get the board up, up to speed.
As far as special events committee, representatives from the police department, fire department, DPW, beach bathing, OEM, council, Lisha, city manager if need be, are at every meeting of special events and vet all of them thoroughly.
Really?
Really.
So how come so many people didn't pay?
Rita, Rita, your time's up, so that's a question for next time. You wanted to know who, who was on the committee, I just told you.
All right, I'm glad you're looking into that, because that board is very important.
Yes, thank you. And it is, you're absolutely right, thank you.
Hi, Carrie Butch, five hundred Deal Lake Drive, and as much as Rita says that there's too many committees, we've both applied to be on the budget committee. So we hope that you consider that, and I just wanted to say thank you for your resolution authorizing the referral to the planning board of various affordable housing ordinances and amendments. You guys have been working hard to catch up on that, and it is much appreciated. And as far as boards and commissions, I think we should revisit the, the representation on, on the boards and commissions. There was a survey that went out, there was two surveys that went out. One had to do with, should we have a human rights council or commission? And one had to do with diversity on boards and commissions. I'm looking forward to working with you on both of those, and, and making some differences and some changes as far as for the better, to be more representative, and I appreciate the direction you guys are going in. Thank you.
Thank you, and we thank you for all the time you volunteer, it's deeply appreciated. The human rights is not dead, it's just a little bit late because of everything else going on. Amy and Yvonne are still on top of that, so it's, it's not disappearing. Just give us a little bit more time. And as far as diversity, can't agree with you more, but help us find people with diversity in the community to apply to some of these boards. Again, as I said, the last meeting, we're holding seats, important seats, planning and zoning are more important sometimes than council, and we're holding seats open for a more diverse representation of the community. So if you know anybody that wants to apply, please tell them to apply.
Much appreciated.
Thank you, Carrie, for all you do.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Louise Murray, Grand Avenue in Asbury. Thank you, Melody. I, I was reviewing the resolutions, and I asked for information, more information on two thousand twenty dash seventy-five, referring to the Bradley Cove. I have a question on that, and I also have a question on the ordinance. Can I ask the question on the ordinance first? Where is seven twenty-two dash twenty-four Cookman? Is that over there by Main Street? That's one question, because it refers to an unnamed alley. I have a feeling that that's the address, but I'm not sure, so if I'm wrong, correct me on that.
Yeah, the alley, I believe it's the alleyway behind the old pawn shop and behind Corbo's, correct?
Behind what?
Corbo's and the pawn shop, right.
What is they going to do with these right of ways, anyway? Again, I get crazy when I see you taking right of ways and using them up and all that nonsense, you know? That's one, I guess, that's just something that gets in my head. The other thing is, has anybody decided who owns Bradley Cove? That's my question. I mean, we're hiring a, an appraiser, an appraiser, but who owns Bradley Cove? Do we own it? What's going on? Are you selling, I mean, how, can you sell anything you don't own? I mean, why are we having an appraisal for it? I, I mean, I, the whole thing is confusing to me.
Okay, I don't want, if, if that's all your questions, I'll try to answer, but I don't want to cut you off if you have more questions.
I'm done.
Okay, as far as Bradley Cove, to the best of everybody's knowledge in this room and other rooms, it's owned by, the rights to the Bradley Cove development is owned by I-Star. We've had our lawyers, numerous lawyers, look into it, and that's the conclusion everybody comes up with. That's why the fair and equalized appraisal is being done this time, where the last time the appraisal was done, where the city appraised it at A, and I-Star appraised it at Z. So this time, parameters been set like, so both appraisals come in the same. The reason for the appraisal, because they have the rights to it, and we're looking to get the rights back.
I still have a question about those rights, John, you know that.
Louise, if you can give us any guidance to get out of that deal, or any guidance to, like, they don't own it, but again, we've had three different redevelopment attorneys, including Mr. Joe Mazzariti, who is, Carrie will tell you, he's fantastic, he's an expert.
Are they on our side? That's, that's the question, are they on our side?
Yes, they are.
All right, okay, thank you.
I believe they are, and I know they are, and again, as far as, like, be it I-Star, Madison Marquette, anybody we have told are redevelopment attorneys, if they're in default of anything, let us know, and we will put their feet to the fire, as we did with the bandstand. This is the only council that put their feet to the fire, and said, you're in default, and either cure it, or guess what, we're going to take it back. So they cured it. And we're always looking at the agreements, and seeing if there's any way to maybe get out of them, but we haven't found that magic wand yet. And if you know anything that can help us, please get in touch with the city manager, and your input. You've lived here your entire life, your family's been here forever, I deeply appreciate that. You're a former councilwoman, so you have a lot of input, so if you have some ideas, please hook up with Donna, and we'll go from there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Louise. Motion to close? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're on to minutes, we have the executive session minutes of December eighteenth, the work session minutes of December eighteenth, the regular meeting of December eighteenth, and the organizational meeting of January sixth. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton? Okay, Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to the consent agenda resolutions. We have resolution two thousand twenty dash sixty-four, a resolution approving special events applications, two thousand twenty dash sixty-five, rejecting bids for traffic striping. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We are on to individual resolutions. We have resolution two thousand twenty dash sixty-six, a resolution approving the payment of bills. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
No.
We're on to resolution two thousand twenty dash sixty-seven, a resolution of the city of Asbury Park to enter into an escrow agreement with Sacman Enterprises of New Jersey, LLC, for five seventy-four Cookman Avenue, block three one zero five, lot six, six oh five Madison Avenue, block two five zero nine, lot three, and seven ten Madison Avenue, block two four zero two, lot three. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to resolution two thousand twenty dash sixty-eight, a resolution authorizing the purchase of parking pay stations. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand twenty sixty-nine, a resolution authorizing the purchase of a Microsoft Exchange server. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand twenty seventy, authorizes the purchase of a John Deere Gator and breathing air packs for the fire department. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand twenty seventy-one, appointing redevelopment council Archer and Grenier, and authorizing the execution of an agreement for, for professional services associated therewith. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand twenty seventy-two, a resolution pursuant to NJSA forty colon forty-eight dash one, authorizing the city engineer to perform services as designee to the city manager for review of development permits in any area of special flood hazard. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
To resolution two thousand twenty dash seventy-three, a resolution appointing the alternate city prosecutor. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes, could you just, for the record, read the name? I'm sorry.
Grace Mamaro and Associates.
Thank you. I know, but the public likes to hear names.
To resolution two thousand twenty dash seventy-four, a resolution authorizing the award of a contract to the firm of Suburban Consulting Engineers to perform professional engineering services relating to Springwood Park. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand twenty seventy-five, a resolution authorizing the award of a contract to the firm of Ottawa Group to perform professional appraisal services relating to the area known as Bradley Cove. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Two thousand twenty seventy-six, a resolution authorizing the award of a contract to the firm of Kyle and McManus Associates to perform professional affordable housing planning and/or consulting services. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand twenty dash seventy-seven, appointing T and M associates to serve as municipal engineer for the city, and authorizing the execution of an agreement for professional legal services associated therewith.
Not legal.
Uh, no.
Engineering.
Engineering services. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand twenty dash seventy-eight, an appointment to the business advisory committee, and the person being appointed is Chris Zaturski. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand twenty dash seventy-nine, a resolution authorizing referral to the planning board of various affordable housing ordinances and amendments to the zoning ordinance in the Main Street, Central Business District, and Springwood Avenue redevelopment plans, which are designed to facilitate the city's adopted two thousand nineteen third round housing element and fair share plan, along with a proposed revised official zoning map. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to ordinances for introduction. We have ordinance two thousand twenty dash one, authorizing the city of Asbury Park to convey easements to permit certain limited encroachments into the right-of-way, including airspace, including along portions of an unnamed alley to benefit the property located at seven twenty-two dash seven twenty-four Cookman Avenue, block two four zero five, lot one, with a public hearing date of February twelfth. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to ordinance two thousand twenty dash two, an ordinance establishing salaries of certain employees within the city of Asbury Park, Monmouth County, New Jersey, with a public hearing date of February twelfth. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?